Thank you, Mr. Dix. What did you say you could use an extra $15,000 for new books and dollars for an additional staff?
$10,000 for part-time staff to assist. We've had such a great response to the opening of the Community Center. And until this year, until 2008, because of the opening, we had capital available to buy books, whereas in 2008, the books will be bought out of the operating budget, not capital. So we have tried to minimize our request, but we kept it under 1 percent. If we could go a little over, we'd appreciate it.
Thank you. And just to remind Council, the last budget, there was an initial dollar figure that you reduced in your budget that you brought forward to us because you wanted to come in with the lowest request to us possible. And Council saw that when the budget came back to put those monies back, if you remember correctly. I don't think something like library service, particularly the branch of the Community Center which is always swamped, should have their budget cut. So I'd like to refer their operating budget to staff, and I'd like to add the additional $25,000 to their budget to be referred to our budget so that we can provide the full service that I think that that community service is commanding from the city. Because in essence, that is a free service we provide to everybody, from children to seniors. So I'd like to move that that $25,000 for books and a new resource be included in the referral to budget.
Okay, that's seconded by the Mayor, and then have Counselor Carrillo and the Mayor that wishes to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a quick question. On this federal period, it says, excluded from the proposed budget, our salary and benefit amendments pending City Council's ratification of amended agreement. Do we have an idea how that's going to affect us, a ballpark idea, how much that's going to affect our budget?
Normally, we have issues. The city negotiates, and then whatever increase, because for pay equity and other things, the city is deemed to be the employer. So normally, when you negotiate an increase with your staff, that same percentage increase is passed on to the library staff. And as far as how much?
I have a...
Joe, Mike?
I have advised the City Corporate Services Department that for every 1 percent that the city negotiates in the recent... ...it requires for the library to maintain pay equity.
Okay, now the Mayor that wishes to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to acknowledge some of the efforts that the library is undertaking. I think that the comments just made were very brief, but I think the overwhelming success of the new branch, the Community Center, is something we should speak about, and the residents of Niagara Falls should be aware of. And I'd like, Mr. Dix, to elaborate, if you would please. There were some interesting statistics I heard earlier this year with respect to the number and frequency of books being taken out of the libraries. And also, I should ask the question, I believe there's some improvements, some capital works improvements being undertaken at the main branch, and to ask if they've been done yet, because there'd be some substantial savings at no cost to the city. And you might want to elaborate on that as well, please.
Well, if I may, just as an example, in the first month of operation of the Community Center branch, the circulation was higher than the total number of books in the branch. So it really is a very active branch. I'd like Joe to carry on with the rest, if you don't mind.
We've had seven consecutive years of increased borrowing, not just since the Community Center, but seven consecutive years. And 2006 was our all-time highest record for borrowing. But more importantly, it's all transactions in the system. We are now one of the top 12 libraries across Ontario for total transactions, total uses, people who borrow material, people who attend a program, people who answer Ask a Reference questions, people who access information on our website, on our databases. There's 11 other libraries, and they're all much larger than Niagara Falls, and we're now number 12. So we've had very busy years, and we've tried to be frugal in what we've requested from Council. That motion would be very helpful for 2008. It's extra from what we asked for, but I'm glad to clarify that we've undertaken some capital improvements to the Victoria Avenue Library this year. We replaced the two sidewalks interlocked brick that were there since '74. We've been replacing some of the light standards and parking lights in the library parking lot. We were pleased that the Park in the City Committee the last two years chose the front of the library as a Park in the City Committee. And we've had raving comments about the new look of the library, and it's a much safer-looking entranceway, quite visible right to the doorway. And, you know, the Victoria Avenue Library was opened 33 years ago, and the board, the steward of the library, must make improvements to it. Next year, in the capital budget, we have a plan to complete Phase Two of that project, which is $50,000 to upgrade the back parking lot. All of that will come out of the board's operating budget. That will not come out of any debentures or anything else. So it's strictly $50,000 transferred to capital, and that will complete the capital projects at the Victoria Avenue.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Longo. Do I have any other members of Council that have any questions? If not, there is a motion on the floor to refer the budget request, including an extra $25,000 to final budget deliberations, ruled by Counselor Iannone, seconded by the Mayor. Counselor Iannone, did you have...
So in effect, referring $3,999,289 as opposed to the $3,974,289?
That is correct. Okay, there is a motion on the floor. All those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you. Thank you for coming down. Can I...
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Our next reputation is going to be from the GNGH Foundation. Welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, members of Council, thank you for the opportunity to be able to speak with you today. My name is John Byer. I am here tonight in my capacity as the Chair of the Greater Niagara General Hospital Foundation Board of Directors. With me tonight is Joyce Morocco, who you probably know very well. Joyce is a pastor of the foundation, as well-known to everybody here in Niagara Falls, not just you. We're here tonight to speak to you about our new emergency department and to seek your continued support for this project. We've prepared a brief PowerPoint presentation showing before and after pictures of the emergency department at the Greater Niagara General Hospital.
In 2002, the foundation launched a multimillion-dollar campaign to replace our aged, overcrowded, and outdated emergency department, and to build a new ambulatory care unit at the Greater Niagara General site. Our community responded as never before with over $9 million to pledge to this dream. Improvements to our emergency department include emergency room space increased from 8,700 to 15,000 square feet. Our capacity has increased to allow us to handle up to 65,000 patient visits each year. Purchasing new medical equipment for patient care, treatment and examination rooms now have been built, and monitoring and patient support systems, a mental health crisis intervention room, a decontamination room for treating patients and emergency service personnel when the need arises, and increased privacy, security, and confidentiality for our patients and staff. The new emergency department was designed to accommodate the latest standards in the delivery of emergency medicine. Care is provided by a highly trained and dedicated staff. The new facilities will allow them to utilize their skills and talents to the fullest extent. These new facilities will allow them... Sorry, I'm interrupting. The new facility will also assist us in recruiting, retaining these healthcare professionals. In February of this year, the new emergency department was opened. Construction was continued, has continued and completed Phase Two of the project. Phase Two includes, so Phase One of two of the project. Phase Two includes the new ambulatory care unit and day surgery department that have been built on the site of the former emergency department. The new day surgery unit was put into service in September. Phase Two also includes a newly renovated main entrance to the hospital and a redesigned patient and visitor friendly parking lot at the front entrance. This new entrance and the ambulatory care unit are nearing completion and will be in operation in the very near future. This will alleviate the temporary problems of building accessibility that we have had to accommodate throughout the reconstruction period. This is good news for everyone who has had to use our services during the past few years.
We want to thank you for this opportunity to submit our request for your consideration. For over 100 years, the people of Niagara Falls have rallied behind their hospital to help ensure that we have the best healthcare possible for our families and our friends. We're asking you that you continue your funding support to purchase new replacement equipment for the emergency department. A new emergency department with old equipment is not a new ER. It's similar to building a new building without purchasing a new arena without purchasing a Zamboni to clean the ice. The foundation has committed to replacing all of the old and outdated medical equipment, and with your assistance, we will achieve this goal. As you will note from the slide detailing the cost, right up there, some of the much-needed equipment, this is a major cost factor in the project. I want to express our thanks on behalf of our patients and their families, and on behalf of the staff of the GNGH for considering our request. We have a vision for healthcare in Niagara that will enable our families and friends to receive the care they deserve right here in Niagara. This is a vision that will help us keep the healthcare professionals that we have, key part of this whole strategy, and to attract more doctors and nurses to this region by offering state-of-the-art facilities and equipment so that they can deliver the highest standard of care. Please join with us in making this vision a reality. Thank you.
Do any members of Council have any questions, either Mr. Byer or Mrs. Morocco? Counselor Thompson? I want to find a budget deliberations by Counselor Thompson and Counselor Carrillo. All those in favor? All those motions carried. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have a presentation from the Niagara Falls Board of Museums. We have Ms. Kathleen Power and Mr. Gord West. Okay.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Chair, your worship. Members of Council, my name is Gord West. I'm the Chair of the Niagara Falls Board of Museums. And tonight, we are here to make a small presentation to accompany our budget request. With us tonight, my other member of our board, Dino Fazio, who seems to be doing Newman service tonight as a member of several boards, as well as a requested his own. Thank you for coming, Dino. This evening, Kathy and I will present some of the achievements of the past year and our plans for the future. And as we go on, we'll take a look at the 1812 Task Force, the committee, and what it's done so far, and what it's looking forward to doing in the future. Kathy?
I'm going to start by, the presentation is kind of in two parts. The first section will be kind of what the museums are doing over the last year and what we plan on doing in the next fiscal year, as well as, you know, just basically things that are going on. And then the second section will outline a bit about the 1812 Task Force that the Board of Museums has taken on, and Gord will present that section of the presentation. So I'll try to go through this relatively quickly. These are the directions, you may recall, that we established last year and indicated, these were the directions that the museum board was going to go in the next year. So important was facilities, stabilization and improvement, community outreach, preserving the unique character of our community through additions to our collections, and preserving oral histories in our community, active advocacy for the heritage sector, active fundraising. You may recall that the Board of Museums is actively fundraising to awards a capital campaign for, in addition to the Lundy's Lane Historical Museum, and relevant planning for the bicentennial of the War of 1812. Now, these are some examples of some of the facilities, stabilization, that we've done this year. And I should mention that we've done all of this with six full-time staff members and a couple of summer students. And all of the work that you're going to see pretty much was done by the staff. On the left, as you can see, the before picture. This is the front entry of the Lundy's Lane Historical Museum, just like the front entry of your house, first thing you see when you come in the museum. Should be something that's fairly inviting. Had kind of mustardy-yellow color in the front entry with brown trim. And you can see, we've painted it now with kind of a water. We like salt Niagara Falls blue with white trim in the front entry to make it a lot more inviting. Here's some pictures of the Willoughby Historical Museum. We're on about a five-year process of updating the gallery at the Willoughby Museum, the main floor gallery. It's very difficult to remove every single thing in the museum to paint the entire gallery at one time. So we're doing it basically one wall at a time. Last year's project was to do the front entry, repaint it, and just redo some of the exhibits. And this year is, just when you come inside the door to the left-hand side, you can see what's been done there. And a new exhibit outlining some of the township signs in Willoughby is on the wall there. Couple of new exhibits were also installed at the Willoughby Museum this year. On the left is an exhibit that relates to the Battle of Tipiwa. The museum is only about a mile from the battlefield, and there's no interpretive center on the battlefield. So if you go and visit there, there aren't any artifacts to see, just interpretive panels. So if you want to see some artifacts, you can come to the museum in Willoughby and see some relics from the Battle of Tipiwa, and get a little bit more information about the strategies and the tactics that happened during that battle. And on the right-hand side is an exhibit relating to log cabins in Willoughby. The Willoughby Historical Museum interprets mostly our rural history in Niagara Falls, and a good portion of that was log homes that were built there. There aren't very many left, and it's basically a dead art as far as people building log homes. So this talks about how log homes were built and what happened to a lot of the ones that were in the Willoughby area. Also included in the responsibility of the Board of Museums is work on the Niagara Falls Armory. And in 2007, we completed the asbestos abatement for the main floor of the armory, as well as cleanup of the molds that was in the basement. Quite a bit of mold there. So that has been taken care of. And the main floor has been painted. You can see on the left, the before picture, all the walls are pretty much builder's beige kind of color, and it's been painted with dark-colored wing scotting with white, more of a creamy color above the wing scotting. So it has a little more presence to the main floor of the building. And so the main floor is pretty much ready for use. The only thing right now that's currently needing to be done on the main floor of the armory is cleanup and waxing and buffing the floors, which saw quite a bit of use during the cleanup efforts. As well, the entire building is not currently handicapped accessible. So that is a major challenge for this building and for what it's going to be used for in the future. And the Board of Museums has been investigating options for accessibility for the building, as well as funding options to be able to carry this out. The funding that we currently have on reserve for an elevator in the building is not sufficient. So hopefully, we'll be able to leverage that money, however, to be able to get funding from other areas as well. Community outreach is a major part of what the museum board staff do. And this is just a couple of examples of some of the outreach that we've done this year. So we've carried out for the last two years a heritage passport, offering free admission to local citizens, to the historic sites owned by the city, as well as the historic sites owned by the Niagara Parks Commission. We carry out in partnership with the Municipal Heritage Committee, a heritage showcase at Niagara Square every year during Heritage Week. We participate in Canada Day, the Santa Claus Parade, parade at the Redman Memorial Service this past summer, as well as we usually participate in the Battle of Lundy's Lane Anniversary Commemorative Service. And this past year, we've also established, the Board of Museums has established a youth committee to provide some outreach to the youth in our community. And a couple of things I should note here is, the picture on the bottom left-hand side is a photo taken from the reenactment that just occurred at Queenston Heights a couple of weeks ago. And the museum board, through the 1812 Task Force, was carried out the lunch for the reenactors who were there, in partnership with Niagara College, where the people in the white coats there in the front, and with Enbridge. So that was a really exciting outreach opportunity for us this year. We've also tried to move some of our outreach into other areas. It is sometimes difficult to get visitors in the door. People are very busy, and a lot of people are not from Niagara Falls. So we've moved into the internet, social networking type of opportunities. And over the past year, we've established a web log or a blog. This is a screenshot from that. And basically, it has some events and activities that are going on at the museum. They're usually outlined there. We've taken artifacts in our collection, some that you might see if you visit the museum, and some that you might not, and showcased them on the blog. And so that's a really great opportunity to actually showcase objects that we don't exhibit. As you may know, most museums only exhibit about 10 percent of their collection on a regular basis. Usually, it rotates around. But the most difficult thing you could do to an artifact is put it on display, because it's very stressful to an artifact. The...I completely lost my train of thought. The conditions that you put an artifact under with lighting, and heating, and cooling, those types of things, vibrations, very difficult on artifacts. So this is a way we can showcase artifacts that you might not necessarily see when you come to the museum. Of course, we also have decided to take on trying out Facebook. And we have a page on Facebook now, which is an interesting, it's been an interesting adventure for us at the museums. This is brand-new. We've only just had this for the last couple of months. And we have quite a few people that are visiting the site, and we're able to put pictures on in real time of things that are going on. You can just see the very top end of some pictures from our renovation of the front entryway with a couple of our staff members dressed up in full hazmat-type gear to remove an artifact that's on display that isn't necessarily the safest to move. And then, of course, we have our official website for the Niagara Falls Museums that carries out quite a bit of information and outreach to our communities. One of the main reasons for museums to exist is preservation and care of the collections that are, for us, the owned by the city. As well, we've taken on the responsibility of trying to capture some of the oral histories in our community. And this summer was the second year of a project that will be ongoing to collect oral histories in the different areas of the city. Last summer, we took oral history collection to the downtown area and collected quite a few of those. And this year, we were in Stamford Centre, asking for citizens to provide us some of their reminiscences. And as far as preservation goes, this is an example of the staff caring for an object that's too big to fit inside the museum, and a bit of a challenge a lot of the time, which are the bobbling wheels just outside the Willoughby Museum. You may recall, last year, we came to City Council asking for support to support the Ontario Museum Association's advocacy campaign for increased funding to the Community Museum Operating Grant Program. And we were really thankful that the city decided to send a letter of support to the Ministry of Culture. And we also had a postcard campaign that we were participating in, where citizens and visitors to the museum could fill out the postcard, and they were also delivered to the Ministry of Culture to show the importance of museums and communities and the fact that the CMOG program was frozen for the last 10 years, and no new funding had gone into it. And after a huge amount of work from many communities across the province, and Niagara Falls was one of the top communities in really putting support forward for this initiative, the government announced in the budget earlier in the year $2.3 million to go into that program. For us, for the 2007 operating year, this operating year we're in now, and it will also move into the next operating year, that translates into an increase in our funding on top of what we already had before of $19,392, which is quite significant. That's more than double what we were already getting from the provincial government, which is really the reason why the museum board was able to almost bring in a zero increase budget this year. Our budget increase is only around $470. So it's quite small, and hopefully, that means that we'll be successful in our request for funding. So I'm going to pass the presentation over to Gord, who will take on the rest of the bicentennial.
Yeah, let's go back to the funding, just for a second. And before I go on, I neglected to mention that our representative on Council is Vince Carrillo. I'm sorry, Vince, it will never happen again.
That's okay.
We understand. How busy everyone is, and we look forward to whenever you can come. Actually, anybody can come to one of our museums, so this is another open invitation to come. Anytime you wish. Just quickly, I'd like to mention again our fundraising efforts. In addition to what Council gives us, we are looking for additional monies from other places so that we can carry on some larger activities that we'll be getting into, part of which we'll talk about when we talk about the 1812 Task Force. It's necessary for us to raise monies to upgrade our facilities. The museums and display areas, the age of these things is coming, as Kathy said. The longer you leave something out, the worse it is for it. So the more traffic it gets also, the worse it is for it. So we need to replace some of the stuff, some of it being the new panels that are at the Battleground Hotel, which, again, I invite you to come and see at any time. You all remember the car raffle. I'm sorry, no one here, one. We tried to make sure that there was something there. And you may actually recognize someone in that picture. And Mayor Tomsalce is also in the picture. But we continue our ongoing fundraising campaign through a legacy wall, which is, we will be, we actually have the legacy wall up now, and we will be fundraising through that, where people can put plaques dedicated to their loved ones who lived in Niagara Falls at the front entrance, which you saw earlier. The trouble, of course, with giving people like Kathy and I only 10 minutes to carry on is that the second guy has to hurry to finish everything he's got to go through. So, 1812 Task Force, we've talked to you about this before. It is to celebrate the bicentennial of the War of 1812 and the coming of 200 years of peace. The three major thrusts that the Task Force is looking at is the legacy, the mark for future generations, historical appreciation, telling our story in a meaningful way, how Niagara Falls fit into all of that, and the celebrations that will come from 2012 to 2014 and beyond. Don't have to forgive me, I'm not exactly techno sadly, so I'm trying to keep up with myself. The Task Force stakeholder and public consultation we had last fall, this was their town hall meeting where we asked the people of Niagara Falls to tell us what it was that they felt was important for us to celebrate as part of the bicentennial. As a result, the committee is now in the process of planning for those years ahead based on what those people gave us and how they laid out what was most important. The next steps are the development of the business plan. Presently, staff from the city and museums, as well as members of our committee, are getting together to put the... getting together to put together a business plan. We expect that this business plan will be presented to council for approval sometime before the end of this year. It appears to be somewhat more difficult than we thought initially, but all business plans, I suppose, are, because we'll not only be using this to ask you for money, but we'll be going to other places for money so that the burden doesn't rest solely on the city of Niagara Falls and city council. Part of that, we spoke about earlier, was the legacy, the future legacy, and ours will be the Lundy's Lane Battlefield Legacy Project. This will improve the Lundy's Lane Historical Museum Expansion, the Sylvia Place Expansion with, in partnership with the Made in Field BIA, the interpretive panels, which I talked about before, that are, some of which are now at the Battleground Hotel. And we will put them in the battlegrounds so there's a better interpretation of the battleground as people come. And this will become, what we hope, we will build this towards a heritage tourism destination that people can come to from all over. The preparation of the marketing plan, again, members of our committee in consultation with members of staff are putting together a marketing plan. We're looking towards this marketing plan, being ready for council approval next year, early next year. The planning and development of a calendar of events in conjunction, not only with the community of Niagara Falls itself, but with other communities around, so that we're not banging heads with other people and being in competition for the same people to come and visit us. Our Task Force will be reaching out to the community groups to forge partnerships to make a successful celebration that will provide a foundation for heritage activities and legacy beyond the year 2014. We don't mean only the historical groups in town, but all of the community groups will be looking to form partnerships so that they can help us carry on beyond 2014. Part of having, part of doing this is developing a sponsorship strategy so that we can look for sponsorship outside of the city. This will be a way of assisting in both the planning and funding so that the city does not have to bear the whole cost, although we will ask you for money as we go along. We also need to develop a volunteer recruitment strategy because it will take an enormous amount of, or enormous number, excuse me, of volunteers, not only to put this all together, but to carry it on through the two years that follow. Task Force seeks to encourage the participation of the maximum number of community members in what we believe to be a significant and relevant commemorative activities. And we believe this because this is what the citizens of Niagara Falls have told us through a, through the town hall meeting. We will be having another town hall meeting where we will present to those who wish to come what we're about to present, and how they have helped us to do that. So, as a last word, I want to thank you for your time and for your consideration of our budget, and we hope to be less than next year. Any questions while I'm still staying?
Are there any members of council that have any questions for either Mr. West or Mrs. Powell? Mayor Salsi?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to make a couple of comments, if I could, just to acknowledge the efforts of Mr. West and Kathy Powell and the entire committee. I think he's underplayed the involvement of the committee in understanding the difficulty in coordinating and preparing for the bicentennial celebrations, where he's actually taken on the task of hosting the meetings on a monthly basis. And a lot of time has been spent in preparation, I know this council is going to hear a lot more, to develop something that would be of great significance, as you heard, working with city staff along with the Lundy's Lane BIA is just a small part of that, and also the fact that we'll have, hopefully, an increase in multinational tourism. Recently, Mr. West was able to make a presentation to the cross-border mayors to encourage the mayors on the American side of the border to engage their communities as well. So we're very proud of the fact that they've taken time to educate our neighbors for themselves and we can join together at the appropriate time for that celebration. So I'd like to move this matter to refer to budget, please, if I could, Mr. Chair.
Okay, a motion by the mayor to refer to final budget deliberations, seconded by councilway mayors. Any comments or a motion? All those in favor? Those motions carried. Thank you. Next deposition we have tonight is going to be from the Winter Festival of Lights. Welcome, Mr. Fazio.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight and commend you on your, I guess your speed of doing this, so usually it's a little bit later, so it's a little tougher for me, being that we're five days away from the festival, but not a problem. I would like to just mention a few people who are here in attendance, our chair, Ethel White Ashby, board member Joyce Morocco, and city council representatives Wayne Thompson and Jim Diodati. Oh, and also Serge Placetti on our board as well, here. Can't believe I'm talking about 2008 before we started 2007. The Mission State of Niagara Falls, Canada Winter Festival of Lights, is to produce the foremost illumination festival in North America. We're organizing events that will attract visitors to Niagara Falls, enhance community participation. After this year, I have both comms about saying we are firmly entrenched, if not the number one festival of lights in North America, certainly the number two spot. We are able to attract 1.3 million visitors last year. How do we do that with some of the events we run, the concerts and the shows, the fireworks and so on? At the same time, we are a community event, and some of the things we do for the residents of Niagara Falls, the Sparkle Lighting Awards, the Holiday Light Exchange Program, the Community Pancake Breakfast, and of course, the Candlelight Stroll in downtown that was just started last year. When we began the festival in 1983, our attendance was about 250,000 people. And as I said, last year was about 1.35 million, for an increase of 440% since inception, and a 12.5 increase over 2005, despite the difficulties in the tourism industry that we're experiencing for the last few years. At the same time, motor coach visitation has also increased, 35 motor coaches in inception year, 2006, 1,090 motor coaches, a 3,000-plus increase from the inception, a 16% rise from The all-important occupancy levels. Smith Travel Research indicated that in 2004, for the November-December period, it was almost 39%, while in 2006 was just over 43%. Again, this during the time of Iraq War, rising gasoline prices, passport issues, border issues, you name it, it's been a perfect storm for the tourism industry. I also want to point out one other number. In 2000, in 1983, occupancy levels were 12% in Niagara Falls. In fact, that was the sole reason to begin the festival in 1983, attract wintertime tourists to Niagara Falls. 12% in 1983, 43% 2006. I mention those numbers because there's rumors in windows that it's going to be an either-or situation. Niagara Falls Tourism will come up next and give you their presentation. Oh, by the way, I should have mentioned at the very beginning, this will be my fourth festival. We have not asked for an increase in funding in those four years, and we will not ask for an increase in funding this year. We will do what we can with what we are given, and we watch every penny. And if we didn't do anything for the community, I'd gladly slash our budget, because I've got documented proof that we have an economically packed over $60 million on our local economy, and that we're responsible for the creation and/or retention of over 2,300 jobs in Niagara Falls. Other stats, bridge traffic, again, despite the craziness of the past few years in tourism industry, bridge traffic, November-December '05 versus November-December '06, up 5,000-plus vehicles. July '05 versus July '06, down over 10,000 vehicles. That's documented. We're going to, we're going to have, we'll be, excuse me, the Winter Festival of Lights will be featured in a Canadian Living Magazine article, as Canadian Magazine will be profiling the festival in Niagara Falls this opening weekend on Saturday. The Japanese version of the Canadian press has just requested images and information about the festival, because they want to promote the festival in Japan. Mexico has been identified as a market, a key market for Niagara Falls tourism, just last week, and working with Niagara Falls Tourism Teletrade Department, sent out an email to Mexican tour operators. And what usually takes a nine-to-12-month advance period to bring people to Niagara Falls, in terms of packaging those trips, 37 people the very next day a tour. Our magazine, which was just distributed to our main market, which is the GTA, which we also included being London Kitchen and Waterloo, Richmond Hill, so on and so on, distributed just last week, the phone has not stopped ringing from people calling about accommodation packages, about buying tickets to our events. Again, not only a tourism event, we are also an event for the community. And in that, we utilize hundreds and hundreds of volunteers from throughout Niagara Falls and throughout the region. We expect that they will contribute over 4,000 hours of volunteer time this year. The festival also brings smiling faces to the community and to the visitors. Communities themselves are defined by events. When you think of Cabo, you think of Stampine. When you think of Ottawa, you think of Winterlude. When you think of St. Catherine's, you think of Grape and Wine. And when you think of Niagara Falls, you think Winter Festival of Lights. Since 2004, we've invested nearly $700,000 in new illuminations. That was our three-story high Canadian-American flay, this is Dufferin Islands. Our Murray Hill, which we've dubbed Snowflake Hill. A nativity scene, a menorah scene, brand new, our Mystic Kids will be in the display as well this year. Brand new Disney display based on the smash hit animated movie Cars. People will see that this year, as well on the box office smash hit, Captain Jack Sparrow himself from Pirates of the Caribbean will be here. As well, we're taking a book from New York City. If you've been there in the wintertime, you would have seen the Saks Fifth Avenue building, brilliantly illuminated and set and choreographed to music. We will be doing that with the Niagara Parks Commission building. Beautiful snowflake illuminations and flood lighting, which will be choreographed to music, a five-minute festive soundtrack which visitors and residents alike will be able enjoy every half hour. Another brand new display, beautiful two-story high Zerman Fountain, which gives the animated effect of a cascading waterfall, our tribute to the mighty Cataracts. It's just a collage of images. One other item that we're doing this year, we don't have a picture of it just yet, we are beginning to illuminate within the city as well. Comington Square is one of the first initiatives. Actually, Centennial Square right here was the very first. Comington Square is the second. This year, we unfortunately are only able to illuminate the trees, and there is a small addition to our request, it's actually not a request for us, but there's infrastructure, lacking infrastructure in Comington Square to allow us to illuminate the lampposts, but illuminations on the lampposts. And that's something we'd like to do next year. Gams, who you are very familiar with, has just spoke to me today, and they're willing to donate the labor involved with implementing the electrical infrastructure needed to do some more in Comington Square for the residents of Chippewa. So I'd like city council to also, if they could, add that to their budget deliberations. I believe after labor, it may be about a $2,000 cost to implement or to input that infrastructure within Comington Square. Attractions or the illumination to attract people, the events that we are able to run during the Festival of Lights to keep them overnight, whether it's the Candy Cane Lane 5K race, the $2 million Disney Beauty of Beast production, which if I could just on that for one moment, Silvermist Productions, which did the Aladdin Junior Show last year, ran it in the summertime and ran it during the Festival of Lights. Hands down, wintertime, during the Festival of Lights, saw much more success for them than the winter show. That's why their $2 million-plus production of Disney Beauty of Beast is happening during the Winter Festival of Lights. And with that, my short presentation is over. I appreciate your time.
Okay, councilor, I know any that wishes to ask a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Fazio, I'm glad to see the new exhibits. My kids are Disney fanatics and we've seen all those movies, so I think it will thrill them immensely. And I'm glad to see that we're investing it again in the Winter Festival of Lights now that we find the US is using the Canadian side to market its own tourism industry. And I think we've got to strive to look our best now that we see they're actually using us, so I think that's great. Now, extending to Comington Square, I have to say congratulations. I know that I forwarded somebody from that area to you to speak on doing that, and I think that if we could put that needed infrastructure into Comington Square, not only can we have it come down the area, the J. Buck area that it's covered to date, we can extend that into Chippewa and then increase business down there also. And I know that was one of the main reasons that the people contacted you. When you say you need $2,000 more for infrastructure, well, it seems like I'm giving away extra money and I'm not meaning to. Are you saying that you need that on top of this budget or for that to do?
No. I'm not asking for those funds.
Okay.
I'm asking that the city, in their own
Budget deliberations.
Budget deliberations, whatever department that falls under, could find $2,000 within that department's budget, in order to allow that infrastructure to be put in place.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. And Mr. Chair, I'd be happy to refer this Winter Festival of Lights budget to staff when the time comes.
Okay, a motion by councilor Anony, seconded by councilor Diodati. Is there any other questions for Mr. Fazio? If I see none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor? Hope those motions carried. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda, we have Niagara Falls Tourism, and I believe we have Mrs. Pierce that's here tonight, as well as I see a bunch of other members in the council chambers. Welcome, Anna.
Thank you very much, and thank you, worship councilmen, ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Chair. I'd like to begin by introducing the many, many supporters of Niagara Falls tourism from our board of directors that are here today. The first being our chairman, Wayne Thompson, our vice chair, Tim Parker, treasurer, Len Kane, secretary, Kathleen Powell, members-at-large, Frank LaPena, Vince Sparrow, Tony Zepatelli, Ethel White Ashby, Dean O'Fazio, and our members from council, Jim Diodati and Bart May. So I want to thank all of you for being here to support us tonight. I trust that you've all received our request for funding for Niagara Falls Tourism, and you have, will have, of course, noted that we've asked that you consider an increase in funding to $400,000 in 2008. The following presentation should answer the many questions I'm sure you have, but I'd be happy to answer any others at the end of the presentation. So our vision, Niagara Falls Tourism will be by any measure the best and most highly-respected destination marketing organization in Canada. Niagara Falls Tourism has had its share of bad press in the past, but in the last year, the focus has shifted. You may have seen the recent series of articles in the Niagara Falls Review where several of our key stakeholder members were quoted, saying that our industry must work together. Yes, our industry has been fragmented in the past, but the message from all the stakeholders was quite clear, "Together, we are better, and we know this better than anyone." In all honesty, I don't recall there ever being a time when Niagara Falls Tourism has had the level of support that we have right now. The situation has improved considerably and continues to do so. The proof is indisputable. There's been talk of building a conference center in Niagara Falls for over 30 years. It's finally coming to fruition because of the hard work and commitment of our private sector members. Dr. Dragon Matovic is the project chair, and I'm sure you won't mind my quoting him, since I couldn't have put it any better myself. "Our industry," and I quote, "recognized that we need to diversify our customer base and reinvest in infrastructure in order to survive," end quote. We are all working together to realize our goal of not only surviving, but thriving. Our mission, Niagara Falls Tourism is the official marketing organization of the community of Niagara Falls, responsible for developing public and private sector programs that produce incremental visitor business resulting in economic development, returns for the city, its residents, and the business community. In fact, it is all about the community. Our members are not faceless conglomerates. They live here. They send their children to school here. They attend our churches, they pay taxes, they contribute to local charities, they're members of the community, and they want to see their hometowns flourish, grow, and prosper. The Sleep Chief Charities Reap Initiative, and I must thank Jim Diodati again for taking the lead on the initiative, is a prime example of this. The event raised over $230,000 over the past two years for local charities. That's local charities. It's not going to those big giant researchers out there somewhere in Nowhere Land. That's $115,000 per year, and this year's goal is to raise over $125,000. So far, 21 hotels are set to participate with 5,200 room nights. Am I correct on those figures, Jim? So what we are doing right now So what we are doing right now is providing exceptional marketing and management leadership and coordination for the city of Niagara Falls and Niagara Falls Tourism Partners. We want to raise world awareness of the Niagara Falls product base, produce more visitation to Niagara Falls, to ensure that the city of Niagara Falls maintains its preeminent position as Canada's number-one leisure destination, and to ensure that all marketing efforts on behalf of Niagara Falls and Niagara Falls Tourism Partners are research-based, market-driven, and convey a positive brand image. In order to accomplish this, Niagara Falls Tourism will, depending on how these deliberations go, engage an agency of record for the first time in its history. The agency's mandate will be to coordinate and brand all of our efforts in order to ensure that the best possible messaging is used to attract our target markets. We will also continue to nurture our excellent relationships with Ontario Tourism, the Ontario Tourism Marketing Partnership, the Canadian Tourism Commission, and the many partners we have amassed throughout North and South America as well as overseas. And for that, I have to thank our staff who are diligent in making sure that we are well-represented in all those markets. Niagara Falls Tourism's current status, we currently represent over 400 members of different sectors of tourism and tourism-related sectors throughout the Niagara region and beyond, the vast majority of whom are small and medium-sized enterprises with limited, if any, budgets for marketing. They depend on us to get their names into the marketplace. They just can't afford to do it themselves. So who are our customers? 56% of the visitors to Niagara Falls are from the United States. That equals 5.6 million visitors. 38% are from Ontario, 3.8 million visitors. 4% are from overseas, that's 400,000. The number of U.S. visitors to Niagara Falls has dropped significantly over the past four years. Five years ago, the number of U.S. visitors topped 7 million. The significance of this drop will become clear in the next few slides as we examine the impacts. Non-traditional markets such as Mexico and Korea are showing double-digit growth potential for Niagara Falls, and in order to minimize the business losses Niagara Falls Tourism has had to extend our reach beyond the traditional near-border U.S. markets. The gains in these markets helped to soften the blow, but they still do not totally make up for the drop in U.S. visitation and expenditures. So here's the research. Border crossings from the U.S. overall are down 16.4%. Overnight is down 6.6%. Same-day visitation, and you can see this very clearly, is down 21.9%. Overseas is up 0.3%. The greatest losses for a destination continues to be in the leisure day trip market, although border crossings have hit an all-time low with a decrease of 21.9%. This number has been offset by the increase in day trips from our domestic Ontario market, mostly from Toronto and Kitchener-London areas. But this is why that is significant. The average visitor from Ontario will spend in a same-day trip $100, whereas if they come from the U.S., it's 89%. It's $189. If they come from overseas, it's $737. So looking at that chart will tell you the significance of whether the people are coming from the U.S. or Ontario and what it means to us as an industry. It is a significant drop overall. Even though a lot of people are banking on that Ontario market, it is not bringing in the funding that we have come to expect and what we need to survive in our different organizations. So the day trip customer spend of 89%, and if they stay overnight, the spend is almost 2.5 times more than Ontarians. This number increases exponentially when we speak of the lucrative overnight overseas market. So here's an interesting fact for you. For every dollar spent by visitors to Niagara Falls, to the city of Niagara Falls, you've received 2.2 cents. That adds up to $33 million. The average nationally is 1.6 cents. So our municipality is actually gaining more than most municipalities. So here's the impact. 2006 with 11.5 million visitors versus 10 million, you're looking at a total economic impact difference of $140 million. So we've decreased $140 million of funding coming into this city because of the impact. And that's a $2 million decrease in the tax base year-over-year. Tourism represents 30% of the region's workforce. The accommodation sector alone employs over 8,000 people in Niagara Falls, and for every $1 million in visitor spending, 28 direct and 14 indirect jobs are created. So we have this wonderful, wonderful opportunity that all of these people have been working on for the last long, long time, and it is a Niagara Falls Convention and Civic Center. The federal and provincial governments have approved funding in the amount of $70 million for a convention center for Niagara Falls. The private sector in Niagara Falls has committed to an additional $31.5 million. The number of year-round jobs this venture will create is estimated at 2,000 direct and indirect. And the convention center plans are committed, planners, sorry, are committed to ensuring that no municipal tax dollars are used for this project. That is extremely significant. A lot of people think that the city is now building a convention center. That is not the case. This is already committed by the Falls View and Victoria Centre BIA. They are going to be putting this all together for us. So we're very proud of that entire group. Interesting fact number two. According to Stats Canada 2006 Niagara Labor Force Survey, the average weekly wage for employees of the tourism sector is $536. I could do pretty well with $536, especially since most of the people in the tourism sector are second jobbers. So this is the wives, the moms, the teenagers and students going out and making $536 per week. It's a good little start. Again, another employment fact, the total direct municipal tax is generated from the people employed by the tourism industry is $11.6 million. Here's a wage chart for you. And I want to point out the very last line, attendance in recreations and amusements, 9.85. That's your kids. How much could you have done as a teenager if you were making $9.85 an hour? Lifeguards at the Great Wolf Lodge are currently starting at $10 an hour, and that includes their certification. They don't have to come in and certify. In Dr. David Foot's book, Boom, Bust, and Echo, he spoke about the effects of the Baby Boom generation on the economy. And one of the points he made was that when the Baby Boomers retire, there would not be enough people to step into their jobs, causing a huge human resource shortage, which will cause a sharp increase in wages. If you ask our members, the shortage has already hit. Hiring and retaining staff has become a major issue for our industry here in Niagara Falls. And this slide shows average wages across various tourism-related occupations. These wages have increased an average of 3% to 5% in an economy where the cost of living has only increased 1.8%. Here's another interesting fact. Each room in the properties in the Falls View-Victoria Centre and Mondays Lane BIAs generates property tax revenues for the city equal to or greater than the average family home, an average of $2,500 per room, and that's 22.5% of the total tax base. So how do we market Niagara Falls? What do we do and how do we do it? Niagara Falls Tourism members as a whole spend over $52 million to market Niagara Falls individually, as well as in partnership with other organizations, including our organization, the Niagara Parks Commission, Niagara Falls University Casino Resort, Ontario Tourism Marketing Partnership, and the Canadian Tourism Commission. Niagara Falls Tourism's marketing budget is approximately $2 million, and that's including admin costs. How do we reach them? Internet, television, print, travel trade, media. Our new Niagara Falls Tourism website has become the cornerstone of all of our marketing activities. In fact, we've been nominated for several awards for the site and our cutting-edge Falls TV segment. Getting people to the website requires a solid mix of television when affordable, print, media, and partnerships with the travel trade, that being travel agents, tour operators, airlines, et cetera. Our agency of record will examine the most recent research available to help us determine what the best media mix will be. In addition, over the past year, Niagara Falls Tourism contracted the services of a search engine optimization firm whose main purpose is to ensure that Niagara Falls Tourism's website is news and content-rich and the first touchpoint for potential visitors. Niagara Falls Tourism's website currently welcomes over 2,500 unique visitors per day, which is an increase of 40% over last year. Our target is to reach over a million unique visitors in the coming year. So what's the problem? Last year, Niagara Falls Tourism received $340,000 in membership fees, $280 in city funding, and $100,000 in OPG grant. Our marketing programs generated $1.2 million in revenue from our members, but $1.13 million in expenses. So what's the problem? $720,000 in core funding minus $760,000 in admin costs leaves us with a deficit of $40,000. So dollars earmarked for marketing had to be used for administration. And a year filled with challenges. WHTI, which is the passport confusion, border crossing misconceptions, rising Canadian dollar, gas prices, the Iraq War, the elections in the U.S., it goes on and on and on. Our industry needs all the dollars it can get to stabilize and increase our market share. Interesting fact number four, the return on investment in the tourism industry for the city of Niagara Falls, 1 in 117. That means that for every dollar the city grants the tourism industry, the city receives $117 in revenue. Not a bad return on that investment. I think I'd take it if I was a stockman or woman. The problem is clear. We have raised our membership fees as high as possible. This year, we've raised them 5% to 20% to the detriment of some of the smaller organizations. We've had to cut several great initiatives from our budget, for example, a new sports tourism manager who would have helped immensely with that four pad everyone is talking about. We do not have the financial nor the human resources to produce more programs for members. So the solution is clear. And here, I had several of our board members tell me, "Don't be so direct." But as my chair so puts it, "I'm a pit bull," so I'm going to hang on to this one. And I'm telling you right now, we need your support. We deserve your support. We've earned your support. We are asking you to consider partnering with us. Your $400,000 will without question provide you with a significant return on investment, and this I can guarantee. Any questions?
Any other questions from members of council? I have Councilor Iannone who wishes to start, Councilor Thompson, Councilor Diodati.
Thank you. Thanks, Mrs. Pierce, for your presentation, and thank you for the opportunity to sit with you Friday. I appreciate you reading my questions. I have a number of comments and then a question. I think the series of articles we just read in the review last week, I think highlighted best the position of tourism in this community. I don't think we've seen, I think, something that describes so succinctly why we need to invest and the problems that are occurring. And I want to congratulate Jane Pellegrini. I know we often beat up the reporters, but I thought she did a great job. But I have a number of questions to ask you. When you talk about us having cut your budget before, and I'm on a positive vein here, so I'm trying to stay there. We cut it because of a report that had come before Niagara Falls Tourism. What measures have you put in, in place, that those types of problems won't happen again? I'm sure you have checks and balances in there, and I'd kind of like to be a little bit more comfortable if you could explain to me what it is you're doing.
Absolutely. We did have an organizational review that took place three years ago. From that organizational review, there was a series of suggestions and recommendations. We have implemented all of them, including governance policies. We have checks and balances with our finance committee. All of our committees actually are reported to on a regular basis, so all of our wonderful, wonderful board members do put in a lot of time. They come in and sit with me, and we go through all the plans. We've also put in a great group called the Stakeholder Strategic Planning Group that will be helping us with the strategy as we move forward as well. We have become absolutely transparent to the point where we feel naked a lot, and we open ourselves up to a lot of criticisms in the paper and out. But I would rather be transparent and have everyone understand where we're coming from and why than to bury things and kind of say, "Yeah, well, let's just do it." It's better for us and it's better for the community. So I think that we're right in line with where we should be, and I think that we're going to continue to look at that and continue to keep our governance policies in line with best practices.
Thank you. And I have to ask again, because the newspaper highlighted it, the DMF, which comes up constantly when people are speaking to us, and it was highlighted numerous times in this series of articles. It also highlighted how New York and Toronto and Las Vegas are using their DMF to market the destinations. I think we asked at one point, are you moving any closer to that? Where do you sit with that?
The DMF right now, we've got a great program in place right now for ourselves. What we do in Niagara Falls is a different model than Toronto uses and a different one than Ottawa uses. What we do is, we come up with the programming, we bring it out to all of our members and ask them to participate in whatever capacity they can. So if a smaller member comes in and is able to participate, we give them that opportunity. And as we grow that, that's how we got that 1.2 million. However, the DMF is, it's a misnomer. It's called the DMDF. It's the Destination Marketing and Development Fund. The money that is being earmarked for that convention center, a good proportion of it will be coming from that DMF funding. So for us to come in and do any kind of playing with that would not be in our best interest because we really need the product on the table. And I just want to point out one thing, too. There is not a DMF model in Ontario that is working well. We've seen problems in Ottawa where the city council has decided that they will not be funding the Ottawa Tourism anymore. So now the DMF group is the only group funding the organization, and that is proving to be a pretty difficult issue for them because what is happening is the hotels and not the product, the attractors, are making decisions on their strategy. In Toronto, there's segments all over the place as well. There's all kinds of issues that are going on, so until the dust settles and everything comes falling into place for everyone in Ontario, I think that our model is probably working better than most, to be honest.
Thank you. And I'd like to thank you for highlighting the fact that the operators are using their own money to build that convention center, and in my mind's eye, that clears up the problem to me of what they're doing with the DMF, because that takes away from what the residents actually have to invest in that, which is nothing, which is a huge step up. But I have a question, maybe three to our staff or Councilor Thompson. I think Wayne and I had the conversation in regards to Nedco, and he's raised it here a dozen times. Is there not an ability for us to remove ourselves from the funding we give to Nedco and put it towards Niagara Falls Tourism to allow Niagara Falls Tourism to market Niagara Falls? Because we already are a strong destination brand. Why are we giving it to the region to market the region, and why are we not making steps to separate ourselves from putting public dollars into that and market Niagara Falls solely as a destination with that money? Maybe three to Councilor Thompson, because I know that he's dealt with that a number of times there and would know the steps we may have to take. But to me, it would make sense. Why would we give the region to market Grimsby? And when we have an agency here and we have our own internal business development marketing Niagara Falls, why are we not keeping these dollars here? And can we take steps to get ourselves out of that?
Councilor Thompson.
I'll get to, I was going to speak anyway, so I'll get to that in a minute, but I just wanted to say to the pit bull, congratulations on a good presentation. I think that things are changing in Niagara Falls with respect to tourism. A few years ago, we're asking for $400,000. Now, a few years ago, I think we were at $900, almost a million dollars for tourism, which included the Festival of Lights. So even with the request that you're making now, it's substantially less than you asked for before. I think that in the last few days, you've seen a lot of discussion, in fact, three great articles on tourism about the challenges and the difficulties. And a couple of years ago, if we were in this situation, I don't think Niagara Falls Tourism would be in existence. And in fact, with the appointment of Anna Pierce and a strong board, and you see, I think for the first time that the whole board almost is here today because they're concerned about where we're going with this issue. about where we're going with this issue of tourism in the city of Niagara Falls. And we all sat around here a few weeks ago and looked at a slide that showed 37 percent of the assessment comes from the commercial tourism sector, where 2.6 percent comes from industry. So, everybody is suffering and trying to attract, and new industry is not coming back the way it should, and therefore, we're very fortunate in this community to have the opportunities for tourism and to work with it. And there's been suggestions that partners aren't working together. Well, as a matter of fact, we have a meeting tomorrow with Niagara Falls Tourism, the casino, the Niagara Parks Commission, and OTMP, which is the marketing arm for the province of Ontario, to work together to form a strategy of marketing for the next two years as a cooperative effort. So I think we're moving in that direction, and I think it's extremely historic that this is happening at this particular time, and I think it's a very positive thing. One thing that always bothers me, and I was glad that you highlighted the fact of the salaries that are paid. Every time you had mentioned tourism in the past, well, they're all minimum wage jobs. Well, $21, $22, and that's for one of the management, low-management positions, is still have the general managers making in excess of $170,000 a year. All of the technical people, the engineers, the other maintenance people, the jobs that are created in tourism are no longer substantial. In fact, you see where everybody in Ontario is trying to get to $10 from the minimum wage, even the students get almost $10 working here in the city of Niagara Falls. You mentioned the DMF, and I think the response was appropriate. Mr. Carrier, who may or may not speak tonight, who is in the hotel business, the Falls View area, these people are assessed $500,000 a year for looking after their BIA, their Business Improvement Area. On top of that now, starting this year, they have committed to an additional $1 million a year for the next 15 years. And now somebody is asking, "Where does the DMF money go?" That's where it goes. It's for development and for marketing and to bring people here to this community, to create the jobs, to create the assessment, to create the opportunities that we have. And still, the hotels are coming on stream, which is not happening in other areas. So, I'm delighted to be involved, and especially now with the last couple of years, it was almost out of business. Now we're back, coming strong, and we have the confidence of the OTMP, the provincial government, and we're moving ahead. But I mentioned we have the partners of the Parks Commission, the casino, Niagara Falls Tourism, and OTMP. We need another partner, a partner that we've lost for the last few years, and that's the city of Niagara Falls. So, hopefully that'll come on stream, and I'd make the motion we refer to staff.
Do you have a motion by Counsel Thompson?
Oh. Question about Nedco. You're on the right track. They're probably going to tell you that there's no way that you can take that money away from Nedco and keep it in the city of Niagara Falls. Nobody's ever asked. I think there should be. In fact, I was going to do it at Budget Time, where we ask our staff to go. If we were getting a fair shake at the region with respect to tourism, I still don't think we're getting it with respect to industrial. In fact, if my friend Serge would stand up and be counted, the way he talks to me in the hallways, I'm sure that we'd find that we'd be all seriously thinking, "What are we doing with our tax money, sending it off to the region?" Now, all of a sudden, just because there's been a lot of fuss made, that we're having contact with the people at Nedco at the region. Wasn't there before, and he would confirm that if I put him on the spot. As far as tourism is concerned, this is rather unusual that I have this here tonight. I made a lot of speeches about tourism over the years, and I had, you know, I was the longest-serving mayor in the city. The development that took place during that period was probably the most in the history of the city, and yet, I really didn't make the, and made the motion for the book for the Hundred Year History. I didn't make that, but I'm delighted to say that I sent this book in the last week, which is The Two Stories of Wayne Fleet with Lies by William Thomas. And it outlines a comment that I made about the Wayne Fleet Swamp Festival, which is not the Wayne Fleet Swamp Festival, and my friend over there smiling because he got me into all kinds of trouble, worry the rock with respect to the Wayne Fleet Swamp Festival. But anyway, I made it in the book with the Wayne Fleet book by William Thomas. And if you want some humorous reading, go open gift lists. This is a great little book about humorous stories about Wayne Fleet, down-to-earth, real humorous, interesting stories. But anyway, I was making the comment, this is a funny way of getting around this, brought it at the right time. I made the comment that, and I wasn't trying to be derogatory, in fact, the people in Wayne Fleet call it the Swamp Festival rather than the Marshville Festival. And I made the comment that they're not really in the tourist business. They're in the business of festivals and getting people from the region to come back and forth. Niagara Falls is in a worldwide competition for tourism. And I made that comment to try to show that we're different than the rest of the region. And in fact, when we pay our money out there, people in Wayne Fleet, I shouldn't say Wayne Fleet, people in Grimsby, I'll pick on Grimsby, and other areas, every time they see Niagara Falls through the regional marketing, they say, "Well, what have you got in Niagara Falls?" Niagara Falls has everything. They've got their big organization down there that's doing all the marketing. They don't need the region to market them, and I think that's the problem. We miss out, and we're looked at as the people who have everything going for us down here in tourism. And that's not the case. We always have to work hard to get what we want. So I think the answer to your question is, we have to go and see if this is legally possible. Having that $500,000, or $300,000, I forget, what's the amount we pay for tourism for Nedco?
I think it's just based on the percent, Counsel Thompson. As you know, it's viewed as part of the regional budget, and then we're just charged as...
I know we have a percentage, but I think there's other factors there that are involved. I mean, about $600,000. If we had that in the tourism coffers along with what we get, we'd really be able to have an organization where we can do the job properly and do some marketing and really do this. So, at the appropriate time, or at, in fact, we could do it tonight and start to see if we can separately do this, keep it in Niagara Falls, because everything we do here affects the region positively. If we do a great job on marketing and bringing people here, they all fan out throughout the region, and everybody benefits. If we do a poor job here, everybody in the region suffers. So, I think it's an appropriate way to go, and I think we have to examine that very seriously at Budget Time.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor by Counsel Thompson to move the budget request from Niagara Falls Tourism to final budget deliberations, seconded by the mayor. Any questions or comments to the mayor? I still have some speakers, actually. Okay. Counsel Ayanone, go ahead.
Thank you. I'll second his motion and Ted second it in support. Then I'd like to make a motion in regards to starting with steps to look at, have a succeeding from Nedco, because I think putting that money into direct marketing for Niagara Falls is probably the way we should start going.
Okay. Mrs. Pierce, did you want to make a comment?
I just wanted to make, just to clarify that this is in addition to the $400,000 we're asking, correct? I'm good.
Okay. Counsel Diodati, that wishes to speak.
Just a quick question to the chair. Jay Cochran, has there been any more discussion? I know we need big events, we need reasons to be put on the radar screen besides the convention center, which is great. Any word on Jay Cochran for us?
We haven't received any word yet. Of course, it's been back and forth with the Parks Commission, because there are many issues that they would have to rectify before something like that could happen. It's a bit down the road, I think, but, but they are seriously considering it for the first time ever, so that is a step in the right direction in and of itself.
Counsel Thompson wants to respond to your question. Counsel Diodati.
Well, it's a long story. We're working on that. There was supposed to be a consultant study done by PKF to respond to the Parks Commission's questions. We're having difficulty in getting that funded. It's going to cost about $15,000 to respond to them, and it is a serious situation to make it happen. We're still working hard on it. There's a little team working voluntarily to make it happen, so if we can get some support somewhere along the line, that would probably be, without exception, the biggest event that this city would ever see.
Okay, are there any other questions by members of council? For Mrs. Pierce, Counsel Carrier.
I'd just like to take this opportunity to declare my conflict. I'm not going to be voting in this.
So noted. So noted. Are there any other questions or comments for Mrs. Pierce? If not, there is a motion on the floor to refer this to final budget deliberations. All those in favor? All those motions carried, thank you. With the conflict so noted. Counsel Ayanone.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion that staff take the steps to strongly encourage the region to allow us to succeed. I'm using the phrase "to allow us" because I don't know whether we legally can do that. But I think it makes absolutely no sense for us to give money to Nedco, who haven't answered questions until Counsel Puttich has actually forced them to answer questions. I think it's not money well spent, and I think it's not money well spent from taxpayers' dollars, who should be objecting to the fact we send this $600,000 down there. So I'll make that a motion.
Okay. I have a second here by Counsel Thompson. Do you have any questions or comments? We'll give our CAO that direction. Okay, all those in favor? All those motions carried, thank you. We have one more deputation tonight. Thank you to all the members for coming tonight. We have one more deputation tonight from the women's place of South Niagara, and I believe we have Mr. Snodgrass here, as well as...
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of council. Hopefully, everybody's doing okay this evening. Do I just hit this? Unfortunately, there are some rather alarming statistics. One out of three women will experience some form of abuse in their lifetime. Thirty-two percent of spousal violence victims who are reported to the police had a restraining order or protective order against their abuser. There have been approximately 25 female victims of spousal homicide each year in Ontario from 1975 to 2004. Almost 40 percent of women assaulted by spouses said their children witnessed the violence against them. In many cases, the violence was severe. Twenty-one percent of women were assaulted while pregnant. Fifty-three percent of women escaping abuse situations were admitted to shelters with their children, and 65 percent of these children were under the age of 10. I just wanted to give you a little bit of history. We operate two shelters within the region. One is Nova House here in Niagara Falls, and there is also one in Welland. And basically, the number of women and children who sought refuge in our shelters in fiscal 2006, 2007, there's 184 women and children resided in Nova House, our Niagara Falls shelter. 129 women and children resided in Welland Shelter, of which 7 percent were citizens of Niagara Falls. They needed to move out of the city for safety and security reasons. Our crisis line received over 2,300 calls. Over 550 women were supported through the office visits and/or on an outreach basis by our legal advocates as well as our traditional housing and support program advocates. 113 women and children resided, these statistics are for a half a year from 2007, 2008. 113 women and children resided in Nova House, our Niagara Falls shelter. In January, we opened our new shelter, and it now, our old shelter had 10 beds, we now have 20 beds. So, the increase in statistics. Ninety-six women and children resided in our Welland Shelter, of which 10.5 percent were citizens of Niagara Falls. Our crisis lines have received over 1,200 calls since the end of March. Over 330 women were supported through the office visits and/or on an outreach basis by our legal advocates as well as our traditional housing and support program advocates. We expect the Ministry of Community and Social Services to provide 70 percent of our overall day-to-day operating funding, which means 30 percent of the funding we require must be sought from individual and corporate donors, foundations, municipalities, United Way, third-party fundraising events, and our own signature fundraising events such as our annual strike-out violence bowling tournament, which I know you all participate in, each March, and our annual book riot in Niagara Falls. Last year, 359 volunteers provided 10,900 hours of support to our agency. Your funding will enable women and children who are citizens of Niagara Falls to access, at no cost, a menu of services which will support them with the creation and implementation of their own individualized safety and transitional plan. Ultimately, the results of our actions are cumulative, and we will all benefit from promoting and providing healthier, safer homes, workplaces, and communities. Together, we can empower women and children who have been victims of abuse to begin to live violence-free lives. Thank you. And if anybody has any questions, I'd be very happy to entertain them.
Are there any questions of Mr. Snodgrass? Seeing none, perhaps a motion then to refer the request to final budget deliberations from the mayor and Counsel Carrier. All those in favor? All those motions carried, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Under additional attachments for information purposes, we have a number of organizations there that are looking to refer the request to final budget deliberations. I believe that there are some representatives from these organizations in the audience tonight. I see Mrs. Harvey and Mr. Faro there from Tadžiakše. I don't know if there's any council members that have any specific questions. If not, we're looking for one motion to refer all the requests to final budget deliberations from Counsel Ayanone and Counsel Diodati. Are there any questions? All those in favor? All those motions carried. Is there any new business for committee? Counsel Diodati.
Yes, Mr. Chair, two motions I'd like to make. One, I found in the past, sometimes, we hear this request, and then the budget comes out, and I don't exactly remember who requested what when the budget comes out, which looks like a Toronto phone book. The first motion would be that council be provided a full and separate list of all fundraising requests, along with staff's corresponding recommendations. I would so move.
Okay. Moved by yourself and seconded by Counsel Ayanone. All those in favor? It's carried.
And, Mr. Chair, second motion, often again, comparing this year's Toronto phone book to next year's Toronto phone book, it's hard to remember line items. And my second motion would be that council be provided a full and separate list of any line items from the 2007 budget that were not completed, as well as any 2008 line items from the 2007 budget that were either moved, changed, or deleted. I would note that.
Okay, motion by Counsel Diodati, seconded by Counsel Ayanone. Understand the question? All those in favor? Opposed, motions carried again. Is there any other new business for committee? Okay, no. Counsel Thompson.
We all got a copy of the symposium for the Police Services again. Are we going to have representation there, official representation?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, if there's no further business, then we'll adjourn to our council meeting.